Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, April 27, 2023, Douglas Plan and Board meeting to order. Time is 7:02. Yeah, 7:02. First item on the agenda, citizen form, call for public comment. Anyone in the audience for anything other than what's on the agenda? I don't think anyone's online. And just for the record, we have Mr. Marx, Ms. Fluschman, Mr. Socrat, Mr. Greco, and Mr. Zwick are present at this time. First item, number three, public hearing, 7:00 PM. David Woodaker?
Woodacre.
Woodacre and Maria Torres, accessory apartment special permit AA-230405, five Manchog Street, map 142, parcel 124, possible votes. Okay, it is a public hearing. I'm just going to read the post in. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning bylaw, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Plan and Board is holding a public hearing on the application for David Woodacre and Maria Torres regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is five Manchog Street, assesses map 142, parcel 124, Douglas, Mass. A public hearing is being held on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the Resource Room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit douglas-ma.gov for agenda and Zoom information. Copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. Public hearing is now open. And are you for this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Benoit, if you want to just do a quick rundown?
Sure. As you mentioned, the accessory apartment for five Manchog Street, you have a paperclip package for this. Everything seems to be in order. The one question we had was the apartment was not occupied at the moment. We did receive the last item in the clip, the last page, is a letter from Mr. Woodacre explaining the situation for this, which is a little unique than we're used to. If members would like to read it, great, but I assume that Mr. Woodacre might even like to speak on that, the tenancy and what it's going to be used for. Any idea if I didn't need that part of the document? Come on up here.
Can you just say your name for the record and address, please?
Agent Woodacre, five Manchog Street, Douglas, Mass.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Phillips, and with what's going on?
Currently, it's unoccupied. Maria is fully disabled. She has fibromyalgia. And depending on, you know, days and weather, how she feels. Right now, we're okay with keeping it unoccupied. We don't need any assistance at this time, but we're looking in the future that, you know, that we will need assistance. I will need help because I'm still working and she's not.
Through the chair, is this currently a prior?
Yes.
Accessory?
It was.
Good. And what's your daughter's first name?
It's Maria's daughter, Joannie.
That's good. Just wanted a name that's related.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Joannie.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Family member that has a disability.
Nice.
And so prior, correct, prior was already one before.
Yes, it's existing in Laura apartment already. Does this situation come under 40, 10% affordable housing?
Through the chair, the applicant does reserve the right to rent the apartment, but only through 40, like affordable housing period and not less than 15 years. So that would have to be a commitment.
Yeah.
So I don't believe that's the intent.
No, that's not my intent. No, not at all.
Intent is to have it and have a family member who qualifies to eventually get it. All right. So no issue.
No, the screen.
That's further, please.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? This is a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Zwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the accessory apartment by Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Socrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, special permit passes unanimous.
You're all set.
Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, sir.
So they just want to approve this. There's going to be a decision drafted inside. We'll provide you a copy with it when you get it. It'll record it at the registry.
Okay.
And it'll be on record. So Jen Futter, your office, be touched to do.
Thank you.
So don't feel like you need to stay if you don't want to.
Nothing else for you.
All right, moving along. I skipped over Unice because there wasn't anything correct. There's nothing, no Unice.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest, only because we have some attendees here in our audience?
Which is a rarity.
Yes. One of our attendees is Bob and Eric from the Economic Development. There's an item in our packet, or at least a request, that I'm going to ask that we take under correspondence under item 6D. If you wouldn't mind taking that out of order.
Correspondence for 6D.
Blackstone Logistics.
Correct.
All right.
Probably our last item on the sheet to go up here with, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Manerik to kind of describe what's going on here. But ultimately, they're going to be asking to modify construction hours for temporary basis.
Okay.
At CRG.
Mr. Manerik, can you just state your name and position for the record?
Bob and Eric, 107 Cedar Street, Douglas, Mass, obviously, working with Economic Development. Did I hear Blackstone Logistics?
Is that what I said? I apologize. CRG, my fault.
CRG, Q.
Oh, Q.
Q.
Yeah.
Thank you.
CRG is requesting to work on Sundays, so they request a revision to the site plan review because the site plan review on this decision, number three on tape six, states no construction on Sundays, or it gives a list of holidays. Right now, they're about a month behind on footings. So they plan on starting footings next week with a double crew. The steel crew is only a single team. So the steel crew have to work on Sundays to keep up with the foundation work. They're about a month behind right now. They'd like to open the building this summer first. Without a relief on Sundays, they'll never catch up with the roof, the steel columns and ropes. So they're requesting to work on Sundays. This is not the site control people, the equipment with bulldozers, excavators. This is just a steel crew.
And they have a stall, a crane, a wrecking crane?
They'll have a crane, just to lift the trusses, stand up the columns. The precast sides are on their way. When you erect those, you have to tie them into columns. They just don't stand by themselves.
Through the chair, what hours are they looking at?
They're looking, the normal hours right now are seven to seven. Those can be revised to eight, eight to seven, if you will. We've got good daylight hours.
Eight to seven.
Through the chair, any idea how many Sundays, Bob?
There's, the first Sunday will be June 12. They plan on going through July. If there's weather-related problems, to avoid coming back to you, they request it August as well as rain dates per se. But it's just June and July.
Through the chair and through Mr. Manerik, can we just say it's this crew, the steel erection crew, that we're speaking of, only not all the center of the panels and everyone else? That's just this crew. And give them sort of unlimited Sundays until they get their job done?
Till they catch up.
Yeah. Have a problem with that.
So if I count to the chair, this should be, this is tilt wall building.
Yes.
So the steel crew will be coming in after the tilt wall's rocked to do the roof.
Yes.
Right.
So the tilt walls will be up during the week.
Right. And they're going to be standing on top.
I don't think it's going to hell anyways.
As long as, I have no problem with that.
Through the chair, it's a site that's off on its own. It's not really going to affect...
There's no residential neighborhood.
No one would probably even notice that it's going on.
You don't even know they're there now, except for they put the verge in, so.
Are they building something there now? Really?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
As long as there isn't no major nuisance.
Yeah, I would probably just maybe have like a sign note, just no heavy equipment site work on Sunday. Just very specific to this.
Other than the associated crane steelwork that they needed.
Yeah, through the chair. So they're going to be having their lulls and all that running.
Yeah.
They'll have multiple cranes running in operation, I would assume, on a million square feet. They won't just have one. And a lot of times they'll have their welders and all that, because they're welding it all together as they go up.
I was going to say the needs of January is with the welders.
Yeah, with the welders and all that. But in that area, you're never even going to have.
Through the chair, may I suggest that none of the steel deliveries, the actual deliveries of the steel should be on a Sunday?
No, they'll be in place. They'll be onsite.
On site, right. On a weekday, they can come in, but they do all their assembly on Sundays.
Correct. And there'll be no tilt wall construction. This is just the steel interiors. A lot of panels on the thing, a square feet of roofing panels. It's going to take a while to put that down.
Makes America move.
I got pictures. That is huge.
All right, Mr. Benoit, how would we formally?
All right.
Make a minor amendment.
Well, not entirely. So the way the condition reads is that no construction may begin before those certain times. It says unless approved in advance by the board, which is why they're here now. This doesn't say we need to reschedule a public hearing or form any sort of amendment. This gives us the ability to make this decision.
Minor change.
Right. So, and from what I'm hearing, it's steel work only, right? Yep.
Eight to seven.
From June to August.
Eight to seven. And it's actually June 11th, not the 12th. June 11th through August 27th.
Well, I wouldn't even put a date. I would just say relative to this crew, to this particular trade.
Give a date and time. That way they're...
They can come back.
That way they're, anybody asks, we have a date. We know it's starting soon.
I'd like to keep it timed definite, just so we can keep a...
Manage it, yeah.
But you got it related to this crew.
I would have no problem when it grants an extension.
Yeah, it looks like steel work only, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, June 11th through August 27th, no deliveries.
Perfect. On Sundays.
Do we know, has there been any complaints today regarding the site noise and stuff to the neighborhood? Has there been anything like that?
Good question. As far as formal written complaints, no. I've heard it from folks about visibility from Oxbridge. Some folks who live in Oxbridge say the tree's down and I can see this. I'm like, yeah, I understand all that. But as far as written, I haven't. How about you?
I have one verbal complaint, through the chair, I have one verbal complaint from a resident. I actually met with him today. He is in direct sight with the driveway, and once they plant the trees and put in the landscape, he won't see the building. He hears the bulldozer tracks first thing in the morning. The rest of the day, as I was talking to him in his driveway, I'm watching the bulldozer go back. I just saw it. So he only hears it one hour in the morning. Tells us only complaint.
That off, not East Main?
He's off of, was it Walnut Grove in Oxbridge?
Oh, okay. Walnut Grove. Oh, yeah, okay.
Walnut Grove is perfectly aligned with the old McIntyre driveway, which will not be the new driveway, by the way.
Yeah, once the bridge is up.
That's a great question. Through the chair, I'd almost volunteer here to kind of update the construction hours. I'll put some sort of bulletin on our website so that the residents are aware. It might not be a bad idea.
Doesn't hurt anything to do it.
Just so people know.
They weren't going to be sending out individual letters or anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's a legitimate deal.
Right. If they start, if they keep starting at 5:30 AM, they know that's not what's allowed.
Then maybe just CC the selectmen, just so they know that...
That's a good idea, too.
Town manager.
And I should have, I can help develop an update with the selectmen for this office.
All right.
It's a form of a motion, steel work only, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, June 11th through August 27th, no deliveries, excuse me, no deliveries. Update construction hours on the website. CC the board's line.
Still moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the amendment passes unanimous. Ms. Manerik, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Two people on?
Also, sometimes people have their windows open.
Both of them?
Close with all anybody.
Who'd do that?
Everything.
No complaints.
There you go.
All right. Actually, let's go in order. Will the bond estimate be quick?
Bond estimate will be quick.
All right, we'll do that. Additional Business A, Blackstone Valley Logistics Bond Estimate Review, possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, we did receive our bond estimate dated April 25 from Graves Engineering. He found that the bond estimate provided was a reasonable amount to cover the remaining work. He did round it up slightly to $26,800. I'm always a fan, if the board wants to make it a more round number.
He must have knew that.
Yep. So if anyone wants to make that at even 30K or 28...
Oh, you rounded more.
It's totally up to this board. I don't mind. But the number provided by Graves Engineering reads 26,800, and he seems to be fine with that number. I'm always a fan of contingencies, so. Up for the board which number you'd like to operate.
Make it 27 even?
Yeah, round up, but not fully round up.
Right.
Yeah.
27 even.
Mr. Benoit, are we getting a motion on that?
I'd be looking to approve a charity estimate by, excuse me, Blackstone Valley Logistics in the amount of $27,000 to cover work identified and the project scope for offsite improvements as conditions of our approval.
What kind of bond is this going to be? Cash bond or?
That's what I'm going to recommend, yes.
You're going to recommend cash bond?
Always.
Motion so moved with the recommendation of cash bond.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwick, seconded by Mr. Preston. Very similar voices in the car. I can't pick it up. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimous. Okay, let's do it. Additional Business B, letter from Open Space Committee, possible votes. Mr. Benoit, can you just give us a quick intro?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we received this request from the Douglas Open Space Committee Secretary, Becky Gallagher, who was joined us on the Zoom, possibly to answer any questions. So we're looking for a recommendation this evening as there's deadline to get a recommendation from us set for May 4. We had this on our last agenda, but we wanted to wait until we had more of a full complement here. We're still missing a member. However, do have to act today, so hopefully some of you folks have either questions about the open space plan, had a chance to read it, or would like to prepare a recommendation of support.
Before we jump right into that, I just see that Ms. Sharkey is online. Trace, can you just say hi, just so we know you're there?
Hi, my apologies. I ran into a late appointment. Thanks for running the meeting.
All right, all right. So let the record show Ms. Sharkey is present.
Thank you.
Becky Gallagher, if you can just give a quick intro on this plan and what you're might be looking for.
Okay, I wasn't planning on speaking to this. I'm a little bit bumbling about this. Sorry, I'm just attending. We spent a lot of time and hopefully we hit all the points of how we can go about planning to work on conserving open space and recreation in the town. I hope you all had a chance to go over the draft plan anyways and come up with any comments, because that would certainly be welcomed. We all think we did a good job, so I'm hoping you guys think we did, too.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually quite impressed with the work that was done.
It is very... It was actually very informative.
With the help of a consultant with CMRPC, and they worked well with our committee members. And I think they put forth a pretty good app. It's with the state now for review. It's going to come back with some sort of comments and modifications that we have to make. But having this letter of recommendation is one of the required components from this board, so.
If I count to the chair, the one thing that I see, and it's not always the town's land, with open space, plenty of open space, but no place for anybody to park. They park all over the roads, both sides of the roads, in the woods, along the rocks. We're going to have open space. Why don't you make areas for people to park so they can enjoy it? You almost have the open space, but you don't want anybody to go there because they don't have a place for parking. And that's the hard part about having all this. And then these open space locks, you go around, where do you park? Where do you go?
It's not even just the trails, like behind the VFW, the soccer field. It's a nightmare getting in there for parking.
Right. But I mean, like, we're going to have open space, and granted, it's a Douglass something project, open space all the way behind it. Somebody from the other side of town wants to enjoy it where they're going to park.
Through the chair, may I ask?
And that's a big problem.
To you, to Becky over there. Do you have provision? I read 65 pages. I couldn't get through 150. So what have you got in this that...
We do have, we do have that provision covered.
Nice. That's what I wanted to ask.
Issue as far as I'm concerned, too.
Yep, similar questions came up after the space.
Parking, connections, anything that comes up that would go, that's given to the town to make sure that there's something there that we can actually access the property.
Right.
So we are covering all these angles. And yes, I agree with you 100% on that.
But if I, through the chair again, but can I ask, are you comfortable with what you have in there? Because you know intimately the entire document, that you have something addressing that that you feel comfortable with?
Yes, I do.
And that's it? That's good.
Just a formality. How long is this good? I know you said it gets redone every so many years.
Seven years.
It's a seven-year document, basically.
Although most towns don't do it every seven years, but it's a good practice because you're eligible for grants.
Yeah.
So they try to keep up with that, I suppose.
Great. Lot of work.
All right, so I guess we can draft up a motion to support. Free, Mr. Benoit to write up.
Yeah, I know. You're on it. We're looking for a motion of support for the open space and recreation plan for the Town of Douglas.
Also move that.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mrs. Zwick, seconded by Mr. Socrat. Any further discussion?
Parking.
She's got it.
With an emphasis on parking and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Sharkey, are you in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great job.
Unanimous. All right, we'll draft that up, Becky, and we'll either get it to you or to whoever has to get to and get it in that document. Thank you.
Put it in the mailbox for open space. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. C. Charlie, 61A letter for Hemlock Street, possible votes. Mr. Benoit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on the screen, oh, sorry. The letter we received is a first right of refusal option for the board of selectmen for consideration of purchasing property at 34 Hemlock Street, Douglas. This is a statute to give the town that first right of refusal for lands that are coming out of chapter. So I'm going to pull the parcel up. We looked at it last meeting, but I wanted to make sure the folks who weren't here got a chance to see it. So grand scale of amount, this is a very southernly part of the town. It's approximately a 50-acre parcel. Zoom in as fast as I can here to give us an idea what this looks like coming in. I believe this is South Street. All right?
Yep, South Street 96.
This is what, Jefferson?
That is Hemlock Street.
Hemlock comes in right off it, and then this is kind of off the back here.
Do we know the width of the access to Hemlock?
It is not sufficient frontage on the roadway.
No, I don't mean for, but for possible recreation use. I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor. I'm just saying, would get us enough to get some parking and some carts to be able to use that space within it?
Not entirely sure, but it is used as a driveway now, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's 40 feet or so.
There you go, 100 feet.
100 feet?
Because of this view.
So it's like 70 or something.
This is even, it looks like it had paper street status at some point.
At what?
It's called Evergreen Street for some reason.
Oh.
The driveway. So that might have something hiding under it.
But it's not a vacant lot. It's got houses.
Yeah, house and farm structures.
There is, I pulled up the contours and the estimated wetland areas, but no public water, no public sewer. This is very southern part of the town, pretty remote access for the most part, so.
And if I can ask through the chair, too. So one, just tell me and let the people know. So when it goes to selectmen for potential purchase right, first right of refusal, is the assessed property the value of the assessment? And that's what they could buy? No, not necessarily.
Not always, no.
Because if it was a raw piece of land, undevelopable, which could be actually more favorable sometimes for recreation, it would be worth less, way less money than X plus Y house, Z house, X house. That changes things a little bit.
Does. Through the chair, if they had any...
Is that what you're thinking, Mike?
No, that's market value land. That.
Market value all day.
It's not worth it.
And if they were to seek some sort of approval and get it from a board and have that in hand, that adds value, too. But they don't have anything like that. This is just a residential lot right now, so.
Right.
Large.
Large, yes.
Through the chair, if I'm not mistaken, so this is a decision to the selectmen to pass the right of first refusal or right, to pass on it.
That's up to the board how they feel about the property potentially being in town ownership. Despite any of the logistics behind, where would we get the money and any of that? We're just looking at it from what could we use it for?
It's not strategic, per se. It does not make another parcel even larger for recreation. I mean, in and of itself, it's pretty large, but, you know, the adjacency to other parcels is not here, so.
Yeah.
I'm not personally interested in that.
Look, they tried to maybe do something with that little, where the arrow is.
Oh, the town.
But wetlands.
Right. Yeah, a lot of wetlands kind of surround it. Houses on all sides.
They can tarry it up to the houses.
If you want to sell it to only the cabinets.
Let them do what they want to do.
Right.
Well.
There she is.
So I don't know, a motion to pass on the right of first refusal?
I'll second that.
A motion made by Mrs. Zwick, seconded by Mr. Marx to pass.
To recommend.
That we recommend to pass.
Let the board of selectmen.
To the board's line, yeah.
And you seconded it.
Not to exercise their right.
Oh, for a second.
I think we got that. Took a few people, but we got the motion.
You know, you know what you're doing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
What do we got?
Yeah, I'll just keep going.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're on a great topic.
All right. Scrap pile. Subdivi, what do you want to, subdivision regulations? It's next in line.
Yes.
I have pretty no thoughts.
All right, subdivision regulations.
Kick the can down the road.
Yes.
Is there anything to discuss on those, or just kind of see what we'd like to do?
I have a whole stack, but I don't have it yet.
I think Matt's ready. He's got that one.
I'll be at the next meeting. You saw my notes.
Do we want to?
You saw notes everywhere.
Pick one or two topics to bring to next meeting, so then maybe we can have some time to research it on our own and...
Sure. Through the chair, one thing I was going to bring up, which was a point. We have a lot of community mailboxes now, and we do nothing about... we have a lot of community mailboxes now, and we do nothing about how much parking space for these mailboxes. So an idea, let's say you have 10 houses, do you allow two parking spaces for cars to come in? But if you have a development of, say, 30 houses, you might want four parking spaces for people to come in and out because you're dealing with so many more people. We don't have anything right now for that. We always recommend that they put a light for the mailbox, maybe should be in the reg where there will be a light for the, for personal safety, you know, in that area. That was one thing I was looking at. The other thing I was looking at is roadways, as you know. Coming up with an idea that's uniform throughout, I mean, I have a picture on my phone, I'll bring it in, like northwest Maine, going out this morning, 10-wheeler in front of me. There's no room on the other side of the road.
No.
Unless somebody stops. So making these roads wide enough, safety-wise, where you can have vehicles pass in the winter time on these roads. And we all know, people walk and everything else. So that was the other big thing I was looking at, road width and mailbox.
So maybe for next meeting, Mr. Benoit, is there anything in the bylaw, I mean, we just highlight and make copies of, just so we have it?
Sure. Yeah, we don't have either of those things.
Okay. Or even where like the sections would be?
Yeah, I can, I can kind of put in some relevant stuff and we can decide what language we want to work with.
In your travels, Mr. Benoit, have you seen other towns have like a mailbox?
It's definitely something that's coming up a lot more.
Okay. I'm just trying to think, there's some literature out there that we can maybe.
Oh, sure.
Use and base it on a.
Through the chair, I think we're on, postmaster decides where, you know, we try to make it in-between lots. Remember we had trouble that one time?
Yeah.
Was on one person's yard. And it wasn't fair.
Yeah.
I mean, a poor guy trying to have a life and the mailbox is right in front of his house. We're making sure the mailbox is in the area offset from any one person, so that it's fair to everybody in that neighborhood, you know? Not one person bears the brunt of all the headlights shining in.
Property lines.
They come running off second shift at 11:30 at night.
Share property lines, right.
Or whatever, or to shield it, or, you know, winter time headlights shining in while you're watching TV isn't fun either. You just have to take into consideration for these developments.
So you're kind of thinking like a, a pull-off area for the mailboxes, like some?
Yeah, so you're not in the road.
Say something like 15 feet for every 10 houses dedicated or something, something?
Something, you know, something like that.
Because they're not technically parking spaces, but they're.
No.
You need somewhere to.
To pull in in a place where the town can also plow. You don't want to make it where you got 90-degree corners coming in and coming out.
Right.
And the guy, the poor guy in the plow truck is like, I'm going to plow this area out. Make it so it's reasonable for everybody throughout, you know, even down the road where it can be maintained really easy.
Or you can even throw it in the regs and have it be up to the discretion of the board, you know, have it a dedicated area for parking and then it's up to the Board of the side if it's.
If it's easy for maintenance, easy to plow, I mean, summertime it ain't no big deal, but it is when there's a foot of snow, you know? If I'm not mistaken, the town's responsible for keeping that area plowed out.
Once it's accepted.
We don't, we don't take the responsibility for plowing out mailboxes.
No, no. No, but if there's a community mailbox.
Yeah.
And the turnoff is part of the road.
Yep.
You've got to clean that area out also.
We haven't, I, I wouldn't, I can't say yes or no on that because I'm not sure. We don't turn into places and plow, we plow the roads.
Right.
Whatever rolls off the end of the plow in front of driveways, mailboxes, there's the residents.
Right, along the street, but, and that's something I'd like to know, better from the highway department, because we've had a couple mailbox, community boxes put in.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, who maintains it? So that means you mean to tell me nobody does?
Yeah.
You just plow the stone front?
I'd be right away.
Through the chair.
It's a good question, Mike, I don't, I mean, I.
Yeah, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
Right.
I mean, it's not in the reg, so I don't, I don't know.
Until it's accepted at town meeting, it's, or whatnot, it's up to the developer to maintain it, but then we got, you would just have to figure out who would maintain it going forward.
Through the chair, in my, in a perfect world, in the city, in Somerville, Brooklyn places, I mean, we are in, like, not even suburban, we're rural, and like, maybe people just pull over the side a little bit and then get their mail, get the heck out. I mean, we're maybe we're making, we're trying to be too nice, we're trying to be too accommodating. Once a day, once a day they go get their mail, maybe.
Yeah, I see it on Parker down the street from me. You see two, three cars parked at the roadblock.
Why is it roadlocked?
There's small roads.
Yeah, but you still get one car by.
It's like an hour light.
Well, and, yes, so the postmaster determines if they want the centralized mailboxes, but ideally everyone should have a mailbox at their house in these new subdivisions, and I think that's why it's not in that.
Yeah.
And the new postmaster was the one requesting.
Yes.
These centralized locations, but I think that for accommodating all the new homeowners, it really should be at their location.
I agree.
For a new street, that's, that would be my preference.
So let the postmaster come, let's, I mean, let's not like jump to conclusion that we should accommodate this.
If it, if it is required, I think we can have some conditions if the postmaster at the time, but I think it's their preference. I mean, my preference would be to have a mailbox in front of my house.
I do too, but lately every development, the chair, they've been wanting.
Because there's a new postmaster.
Right, so that's what I'm getting at, for the last, what, four?
Yeah.
Four, five developments.
But that's really not how it should be, and they've, you know, things change over the years.
Let the condo association do it, plow it out.
Yeah, that's totally, that's an association.
But I mean, for these two-acre lots or whatever, picking up, you don't need to do that.
It's two acres, yeah, I think everybody deserves to have a mailbox in front of their house. I don't think they should be stopping at a centralized location like a condominium complex.
And through the chair, and I agree, but what they're trying to do, and you know, and I know it, they're trying to save on fuel and everything.
Yeah, reduce the mine.
So they're saying, we want a community box, one stop, unload, and gone. And that's what it's all going to.
Let the postmaster come.
That's what it comes down to, yeah. It's money.
Oh, yeah, but we need to supply the area for the residents to pull off and get their mail.
Yeah, but we hadn't even asked to be doing that yet, so I just.
You're, you're not wrong.
Yeah, the last four.
Last four, yeah.
But I think it's the person in charge, and I do think that in the niceness, I think everybody should get their own mailbox.
Yeah.
In the niceness of the intent of the subdivision control.
Especially a two-acre.
Yeah, 200 feet of frontage. It is what it is.
Right.
They, they need to do the mileage, it's going to cost more, you get to, you know, adapt.
You've got to be electric anyways.
Solar, put a little solar panel on top of the.
The little truck.
Yeah.
But no, just stop, they're coming up last.
You can have, yeah, you can have something in the, in the regs that would allow for that, so that we don't have to repeat it and that people don't forget about it and that, you know, they understand what's going to be required.
Yeah, we can break it down by zones, like RA mailboxes.
I don't know if we can even, I think the postmaster is going to be telling us what we can, what the person can do, what the developer.
I think our regulation might end up reading something to the effect of, in the event the postmaster recommend, recommends a community mailbox, here are the design standards.
Yeah.
And if I can through the chair, the last couple, one of them also forgot all about, we told the guy, you need to go talk to the postmaster, he came back and said they want a community box, just like that. No, yes, he has a box.
That's hearsay, I want to see that.
Show it to you.
Well, that's why we did it.
That's it.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, you're buying a house here on two acres, you deserve, it should be a right to have a mailbox.
It should. I don't disagree with you one bit.
Constitutional right.
Mr. Benoit, if we do make these changes, do we need a public hearing?
It's not a town meeting item, thankfully.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't dive too much into it at this time.
We can't.
Can, yeah.
It's, through the chair, it's, I go to the post office every day, that's where my mailbox is.
Same.
So it's no different for me to go to the post office than it is for people who live in these subdivisions or cul-de-sacs, stop at their little post office, that's what it is.
Right.
Can't buy a stamp, but you get your mail there. I don't see the problem.
Logistically, it's in front of somebody's house.
Yes.
That's the problem and the snow and the maintenance.
We don't have the regulation of that, we don't have the say in that. We can't say, no, put your mailbox in front of your house, the post office makes that decision.
No, 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 through the chair, let's back up. We had to develop or dedicate an area once the postmaster said where they wanted it. We had to develop or dedicate an area for that, so it wasn't on somebody's house. That's what we've done in the last two subdivisions, for fact. You know that, and I know that. So the idea is, is just put it in black and white, we've also said, there'll be illumination for safety for people at night.
I have no problem with putting a light there.
Right.
And creating a little bit wider space.
Yeah, that's what we're talking.
But it's no different than people coming out of their house and walking out to the road and getting their mail out of their mailbox.
Right.
I don't, I don't see what.
But now they'll have to walk down the road to get their mail, not at the end of their driveway, if they, or start their car up and take a ride.
Require sidewalks at all.
People don't work every day and drive by.
Right.
Let's, let's bring this to a wrap here.
That's all, it's a mailbox.
I don't have a light on mine, it's a mailbox.
Because the moon might not be.
All right, guys, we're going to bring this towards an end. Meg, if you.
Sorry, through the chair, Mr. Benoit, are there other towns bylaws that you're familiar with that are omitted from ours? Are there other towns that have certain provisions in their bylaws that we don't have that are, should be of interest for our review?
Oh, I'm certain, I can find those for you.
Oh, yeah.
Ours hasn't been updated in quite some time.
Is there a list of those that potentially we could review?
Yeah, I could pull up some items, sure. It's mostly design standards, I mean, we cover the, the black and white stuff, what needs to be submitted with applications and their plans and what needs to be on ours and all that. I think we do that pretty well. Everything after that is design standards. I mean, there's little things that we've learned over the last, at least I've learned over the last 18 months that I've been here, there's things we need to add, like making sure we have at least a 20-foot width for a fire apparatus, you know? There were some other things in here too, but we talked about street trees not being located between the sidewalk and the road because the root structure is destroying our own infrastructure, so I've got my notes on those, I think the purpose of us talking about it here is to collect everyone else's. So, because eventually I'm going to put all this in a red line document and send it to you, so I'm really interested in what everyone else has at this time, so.
Just so you know, to update you on what's going on with Jefferson Drive, we, all the trees have been removed, all the stumps have been ground, and several sections of the sidewalk have been replaced.
Oh.
So it's a little bit safer, there's still a couple sidewalks to be replaced because they, they did heave from the roots.
Sure.
And we had one lady that tripped, broke her arm and wanted to sue the town.
Right.
Oh, wow.
She tripped on.
I own my trees. Tripped on the, the roots from the trees between the grass section and the sidewalk.
She worked shades?
Heaved the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, so I think addressing the.
It's just a bad place to put them.
The things that have been brought to my attention.
Right, it's a grass, it's a grass strip, leave it a grass strip.
Yeah.
We're constantly whacking mirrors.
Yeah, for 20 years.
That they grow out into the road, constantly have to be cut every year.
Tell me about it.
So they've all been removed, all the stumps have been ground, and several, several sections of sidewalk have been replaced.
Through the chair, that could be something to remove that out of there and say any trees we planted will be planted from the sidewalk to the house, not between the sidewalk and the road, so.
Yeah, I have no.
Mr. Chairman, I've run into that as a problem as well.
If we're going to have a regulation, I would have them plant that tree back, if not right next to.
No, no.
Up on their own property, out of the right of.
Have the homeowner plant it, not us.
Not our right of way.
We can't have a homeowner.
Well, not like, we, we're not saying the homeowner to do it, but if the homeowner wants to put a tree in their front yard down the road.
It's on their property, it'll not be in the right of.
It's also the opposite, if we line them up outside the right of way, outside the sidewalk, they're just going to take them down if they want to, so either, either could happen.
Yeah, we're going to, I think the movement has been with all the waivers for no street trees, that we eliminate the requirement for street trees.
I agree, yeah.
Well, I've been there 13 years and there, and he's been, anything that's ever come in, first thing he says, get rid of the trees.
So that could be an easy one we.
Right. I got a handful of those, but I'm really interested in everyone's feedback, so I can add it to the notes.
Yeah, so that's two things to eventually dive more into is road widths and.
Mailboxes.
Mailboxes.
And then there's some design things that I'd love to add at some point, like we don't ask folks for their cut fill analysis on any of these things, know how much is coming out of each lot or going into each lot. It's not required to be submitted on their plans, I think that'd be something we should know. That doesn't mean they need individual removal permits in all cases, but maybe some, but knowing those quantities is going to be important, especially at regional subdivision review.
I thought we touched on that.
Yeah, that's why I wrote it down, we've talked about it at some point.
You know, we're starting out a cubic yard.
Yep, that's all we got in here.
Otherwise it becomes a nun.
Yeah, so I got a handful, I got a handful of things, but I'm curious what everyone else has too.
I know, and through the chair, there's one in there on radius angle on corners. The town, believe it or not, there is a, what is it, a minimal, maximal, what it can be, angle. And I've never seen the print have their angles, and I've shown what the angle is of the roads. It's already in there, so.
On the radius, on the tree, do you mean?
Yeah, when you, like the, the other project owns that reverse corner.
Yeah.
We only allow so much of a point, and it's printed in there. I don't know if that point violated our bylaw, because it's not on the print.
Yeah.
And so, all the street, I think should be on the print, to make sure we're compliant with what's going on in the book.
Got some stuff to work on.
Yes.
All right.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Have we, are we planning on presenting anything at town meeting this year?
For subdivision?
Yeah.
No.
No, okay, no, no, no regulation or rules changes as far as this spring meeting goes.
Oh, I, I do have one of those. We, we voted on the floodplain bylaw for.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
But that's, that's the only one we have.
Yeah.
I will report to the board, I know it's kind of slightly off our agenda, but it is an ongoing development item, if you want. That is, if you're ready to move on.
You get so excited.
I'm, I'm ready to move on from, uh, we have some homework and some stuff to work on, so.
Great.
All right, ongoing development?
Letter A, I will inform the board that this, the Oak Street Solar Project was shut down briefly because they didn't have all of their bonding that would, the bonding in place. We agreed on the numbers, but they didn't get the bonds in place and they set it up with a charity company from like midwestern Iowa or Texas or something like that, I forget what it was, and it's supposed to be a local bonding company. And there were two bonds, one of them was $12,000 for roadway restoration and $7,200 for stormwater. So, they gave us these bonds, the town council said, these are not what we want. So, we got some checks from them, they submitted two catch bonds instead, they were received, so we let that project. I released the hold on the project, now they're, they're going to get started up again.
Which one is this?
The Oak Street Solar Project. So, that one's back in business.
How long were they shut down?
A couple of weeks.
Okay.
Couple of weeks, and they just started clearing trees and they got to do the driveway apron and stuff, and that's what Ken wants them to do first, so. Not too far along just yet, but growing.
Any other?
Yes, so Stonegate, so, as you guys are familiar with, there were two cul-de-sacs that we were going to send to town meeting on Monday for roadway acceptance, which we sponsored and supported. Unfortunately, not all the documents were prepared in time for the selectmen to vote to approve the layout on the 18th of this month, so that item's going to get passed over on Monday. It is very unfortunate, given the due diligence that we did.
Yeah.
We hunted down the plans, we did, we did our part.
And now they waited a whole nother year.